Oh, of course. Don't be shy.
A lot of people.
Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Ms. Gonzalez. We have a quorum.
Playing tricks on me tonight.
On your toes.
Yeah. All right, the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 26, 2021 in the following manner: Posted on the Bulletin Board Reserve for Announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey; mailed to the Home News Tribune Sentinel and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. This evening, we have several presentations and some recognition, so we're thrilled that you are all here to participate and join us in this event.
Very good. Our first presentation is from the Aubrey Foundation. I'd like to invite Emily Angeles up to our podium here. And you tell me when you're ready to queue up the presentation.
...was held on Sunday, October 17, 2021. The purpose of the Purple for Pappas 5K Race is centered on bringing this community together, so to have so many community leaders actively involved in Race Day was truly wonderful and appreciated. We would like to thank Mrs. Charoka for her unwavering support. It was wonderful that she was able to speak during our opening ceremony. In addition, we would like to thank the Board of Education as a whole for your constant beautiful Race Day we had. I invite you to watch our culminating video for this wonderful event.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 7th Annual Purple for Pappas 5K. Aubrey Pappas inspired everyone she knew to be a better person and to do good for others. Thanks to all your support, we have been able to sustain the Aubrey Foundation and continue to do great things for the students and community of North Brunswick in Aubrey spirit.
How's it going?
Why purple? Because purple was Aubrey's favorite color, so it reminds us of her. Purple represents Aubrey's contagious laugh, her energy, empowerment, and encouragement.
Good morning. How we doing, everybody?
Before we go to the start, we are going to take a big group photo. So Kristy, our photographer, come on up on stage and take the picture of the whole group with the flag behind us. Five, four, three, two, one.
We want to thank some very important partners. Without these people, today would truly not be possible. Thank you to the Park Rangers for keeping us all safe, Luann Benson, Frank Locke, Superintendent Janet Charoka, Mayor Wilmack, and the North Brunswick Township for all of their support and help coordinating this event. And of course, a huge thank you to our Purple for Pappas 5K Committee and all of those here today volunteering their time to make today possible.
We have over 200 people registered to cross the finish line today, ranging from ages one to 80. Now that's purple power. Of all who are registered, we have over 30 VIP, so that means they run every single Purple for Pappas 5K. We also welcome back two people who are returning this year as their homecoming race. That means they were with us at our first race in 2015 and are now returning for year seven. Over the course of the past seven years, this group, with your help, has given over $60,000 to the North Brunswick community. How about that? That's a credit, right?
...C3 nonprofit organization. The foundation's mission is centered on bringing the community together to celebrate Aubrey Pappas's life and empower North Brunswick students to achieve their goals. Over the past seven years, we have been able to give over $45,000 to the North Brunswick Township Schools. The majority of that has been given to our high school seniors via the Aubrey Pappas Memorial Scholarship. In addition, we continue to fund the Pappas Club, where we encourage community service, teamwork, and empowerment amongst our younger students. We have also given to other areas of the community in need, including supporting our veterans, our partnership with Reefs Across America, and this year we've supported the North Brunswick PVA 160 Toy Drive. We donated to the food pantry to help build their supply back, and so much more. On behalf of the Aubrey Foundation, thank you for your unwavering support these last seven years. We're looking forward to...
Thank you, Emily. That means the world that you were able to come and share that video with us. It was a wonderful day, and we love the continued partnership with you. Our teachers had a jeans day, as you know, and we already gave you the check for over $2,000 to the Aubrey Foundation from our staff supporting the organization, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. We have some special awards to give tonight to two board members. So Barry Duran Harris, our vice president, and myself will be providing these.
Again, I want to present you with this plaque that reads...
Barry and Tony, if you guys, I don't know if either of you would like to say a few words, starting with Brooks?
So, thank you. This was unexpected, and I greatly appreciate the recognition and acknowledgement. I owe a great deal to the community of North Brunswick because it was your belief that I was worthy of such a responsibility to be a board member that, for three consecutive terms, I was elected by you to represent the school board of North Brunswick. So I owe a great deal of thanks to you. I owe a great deal to the eight people that sit on the board with me because it's truly been a team effort in order to help administer and guide the school district of North Brunswick. So I want to say thank you to all of the other people up here on the dais with me. And a special thank you to my wife, who's here with me, for all of your support, the many nights away from home, and to our son for all of his support as well. So thank you to everyone. I greatly appreciate it, and thank you for the award and the recognition. Thank you. I greatly appreciate it.
Use the other one there.
Start with a mic that works.
Yeah, start with a mic that works. Thanks. That was good. Yeah, well, it's been a privilege to be a part of this team. We can start by blaming Rich Legori, who years ago said to me, "Oh, you know, the board, there's an opening, you might be interested." And then he left for a while. But he left me with a great understanding of what it meant to be a member of this board, the responsibility to the community, to our staff, and to our students, most of all. And I hope over these last few years or total years that I have lived up to your expectations. I certainly have felt privileged, truly privileged, to be part of this team and every incarnation of this team that I have sat with. I've had fantastic... I've had fantastic vice presidents and tremendous new folks coming on board and showing their strength and showing their desire to help our children and our staff. And it just fills my heart to have been a part of this incredible team and some of the previous incarnations who unfortunately, except for one that I'm seeing at the very end of this row, are not here today. Again, my honor to have served, and now my family and I are going to focus on getting through the redo of three bathrooms and continue to look for ways to serve our community whenever needed. So thank you all for your support and your commitment to us as a board as well.
Thank you. We now have our Fall Athletic Honors this evening, and I would like to invite Mr. Sean Morell, our Athletic Director, up to the podium to begin the process.
Thank you to Ms. Charoka and to the Board of Education.
Ms. Morell, I'm going to ask you to make sure you're really, you may want to bring the microphone up to your mouth so they can hear you. It's tough on the tricaster.
We'd like to thank everybody for being here, parents, coaches, players. We were fortunate this year to have 20, this past fall season, to have 20 All-Division or All-GMC athletes who are honored and recognized from North Brunswick. So we continue to have some great accomplishments here in the world of athletics. We also are not including some of these athletes who will be recognized later on for possibly All-Area and All-State as well. We have a couple who may have received some of those honors since this has been published, so we'll probably give them some recognition, I'm sure, by their coaches today. So we're very proud of our athletes at North Brunswick High School. First, I would like to introduce our girls' tennis coach, Coach Mark Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the continued support from the board and also from Mr. Morell and the school. Tonight, we have three girls who made the All-Division team. We have Vedika Sanghar, who played one match at first singles and 12 matches at second, excuse me, second singles, and was undefeated for the year. Unfortunately with us... Sorry. Unfortunately, who cannot be with us tonight, Vaynaya Dinesh, who was our first singles player, who took, being the first singles player, took on best players of the other team and had a good season. She was seven and six for the year and made All-White Division. And she's a junior, unfortunately, who's graduating. Good for her, but bad for us. And then we also had Hillel Patel, who is not here this evening. She attends the Edison Academy, and she, for the second year in a row, at third singles, was undefeated. So for two consecutive years undefeated. That's how we head for...
Vedika, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to my coach, Coach Fitz. I know I annoy you a lot, but thank you, and thank you to the Board of Ed for recognizing me and also the whole team for motivating me throughout the season.
Yeah. Vedika, come back.
Next up, we have Coach Diego Hernandez for girls' volleyball. As he's walking up, this is Coach's first year as a head coach, and we saw a great improvement in the program from one year to the next. So thank you, Coach, and thank you to your players. Thank you very much for the continued support. Like Mr. Morell said, this being my first year as a head coach, there was a lot of expectations, a lot of things that I wanted to work to, and we improved by a lot compared to the last couple of years, which is always the goal, improvement, which is what you want to see. And none of that would have been possible without the person that we're recognizing today, our athlete, one of our athletes. She was the glue of our team. For those of anybody who's familiar with volleyball, the setter is probably one of the most important persons, the most important people on the team. The position is invaluable, right? Without them, you really can't do anything else in the game. So All-Division went, for the White Division, went to Megan Farrell, our senior. So super proud of her and everything that she's done. I don't know if you want to say a couple? No. Megan is very grateful for everything from everyone, so thank you very much. Next up will be girls' soccer, Coach Megan Carroll. This year... That's you, Coach. Thank you. This year, the girls' soccer team, another outstanding season. They were GMC Tournament of 70 finalists and had a wonderful record overall as well.
We have a lot of stats, so I need my phone. First, thank you, Board of Education, Mr. Morell, Mrs. Charoka, for all your support this season. It was a really great one. Our overall record was 13, 6, and 1. We were the division champs. We won't say co-champs. We were number three in the GMC tournament for seeding. We did make it to the semifinals, losing to my dad, so not great bragging rights. The four girls that, the five girls that were recognized for All-Division were Charlie Warren. She is a four-year varsity player, one-year captain. She's had seven career goals, 12 assists. She made All-White Division in 2019 and received All-State recognition in 2021 this year as well. She's versatile, she is strong, she is our defensive stronghold. Without her, our defense, our center, our defense would not be nearly as unstoppable as they were. We have Emily Camlett, who is also another defensive stronghold. She's a four-year varsity player. She was a crucial part of our back line. She is the type of player where you tell her to do something, she does it no matter what. She was excellent this year, and we're really going to miss her on our outside day. Akyla Hawkins. She was a key asset to our offensive line. She's been on varsity for four years. Received All-White Division in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. She received All-GMC in 2019 and 2020. She received All-State recognition in 2020 and 2021. Overall, in her four years, she has scored 50 goals, has had 27 assists, totaling 127 points. This makes her the fifth in the top 20 players in North Brunswick history with the most points. I also have two more that are five minutes out. The Degatanos.
We can wait, if you want, for them. We can...
Yeah, we could circle back.
We can circle back. We'd be more than happy to. They deserve the recognition.
They had soccer practice.
We can give these three girls their certificate?
Yeah.
You know, while we're here, it's just so nice to have an audience. This is why the Board of Ed is here. We're so appreciative of our students and our parents and being able to honor them tonight and have an in-person audience. So thank you all for bringing your students, and students, thank you for coming.
Next, we will call up Coach Pearl Liddy for boys' soccer. The boys' soccer team were the Division, White Division champions this year, as well as the girls', and were GMC finalists. Thank you for having and recognizing our soccer team this evening. I'd like to thank Mr. Morell, Mr. Neller, the administration, my coaching staff, Coach Waddell, Coach Ro Hall, Coach Montoya, who were integral in our success this year. Also, we had a fantastic Parents Association led by Diana Whalen. And last year, we didn't have very much just because of COVID, but this year, we kind of rebounded, had a wonderful banquet, so it was fantastic. This year's team was led by 14 seniors who had great character, worked very hard, particularly our three senior captains, Jervin Unzor, Kenny Aguilar, Olivier Hippelite. We had two other seniors who were goalkeepers, Christian Diaz, Javier Trejo. Our recognition tonight, we have Jervin Unzor, who, this year, after the 10th game, he broke his ankle, but still led the GMC in goals scored. And his recognition by the coaching staff, the coaching staffs throughout the GMC, he still was chosen as the second highest-ranked player despite missing all of those games. He was All-GMC last year, All-GMC this year, White Division player, All-White Division player last year, All-White Division player this year. Just a tremendous, tremendous leader, worked hard over the summer. Unfortunately, this injury really kind of hurt, I think it hurt our team quite a bit, but he was still there, still provided a lot of leadership for us, so fantastic young man. We have another senior, he's not here, couldn't make it here this evening, Kenny Aguilar. He's a four-year varsity player, four-year starter. Since I've been here at North Brunswick, there's only been three players who've lettered all four years. He was one of those three. When Jervin got hurt, he really stepped up and became the leader defensively. He kind of led us to the GMC final. In those four games that we played, we gave up one goal. So Kenny really played an important part. Recognition for a junior player here who's here tonight, he received All-White Division recognition and then also All-State recognition, and that's Ashray Shetty.
Would anyone feel like to say anything? You're welcome to say something, gentlemen.
Nothing much to say. I just want to congratulate Coach for winning the Coach of the Year as well, and...
No, you're good. I would just like to say thank you to each one of the coaches, Coach Roehall, Coach Waddell, and Coach Liddy. They all played a part throughout my high school career, and I just want to just, especially through these hard times, especially my teammates, they pushed me, just as I pushed them throughout the season.
I want to say one, one other thing. I want to thank the board. I've been here coaching for 14 years. This is my last year here, and it was such an honor when I was able to get appointed head coach 14 years ago, following the footsteps of Stan Williston. I always felt, you know, that when I was coaching other teams and playing North Brunswick, that was the standard. So, I hope I kind of lived up to that a little bit. You know, it was, it was big shoes to follow, but I'm hoping that the program continues success in the future. Thank you.
Before I leave, we do want to recognize Coach Liddy. Coach Liddy was the All-White Division Coach of the Year. He was also the GMC Coach of the Year, and he was also honored as the Home News Tribune All-Area Coach of the Year. As Coach has mentioned, this is his final year here at North Brunswick, so we wanted to present Coach with a plaque. From 2008 to 2021, he has amassed 162 wins, five divisional titles, a GMC title, and a state sectional title. And least of all, he has impacted the lives of hundreds of student athletes. So, congratulations, Coach, and thank you. Next up, we have Coach Michael Sypot for football. Another great season for the football team, including a state final appearance.
I thank Superintendent Mr. Soroka, the whole Board of Ed, everyone here, the town of North Brunswick, and for giving me the opportunity to lead this team and the football team in town. And to Mr. Morell, he does a fantastic job with not only us with football, but all athletics, and he's, if there was a vote for Athletic Director of the Year, he's got my vote, and he does a great job. What can I say? If the Degatanos are here, I could talk about them not wanting to be my kicker this year. I asked them to be my kicker, and they didn't want to. They said no, they said get out of my face, so that was it. What can you say? You know, we, we lose 41-0 to Hillsborough, the last game of the year, and we kind of go into the playoffs, and we're like, all right, what do we got? What are we going to do? It was a successful season up until that point, and we go into the playoffs as a three seed. We're down 14-0 in the first round, we come back and win. We're down 14-0 in the semifinals against Cherokee, which we were a 22-point underdog and had no business winning that game. And we were winning 31-14 in the fourth quarter, and to me, arguably one of the biggest wins in school history for football. And to go back into the state finals against a Hillsborough team that was, at the end of the year, 13-0, and the number four team in the state. And just the vision I had of the entire town supporting us in the student section and all the people that were there supporting us, that's, that's what we wanted to build five years ago, and it took us five years to do it, and we're going to continue to do it. And the support from the town and the school is overwhelming. So, I speak for the team and the staff and myself, I want to thank everyone that's in this room and everyone that has helped up until this point. So, the eight guys that were honored, I'll start with the juniors, they were a big part of everything that we've done this year, not, in no particular order. Zamir Dawood, where's Zamir? Zamir has been a very, very exciting player. We're so glad that we have him for another year. Receiver, defensive back, had one of the biggest plays of the year, running a kickback against Eastern in the first round of the playoffs. And because of that, I'm not going to say it. Well, he is TikTok famous because of that, because of his dance with the cheerleaders in the end zone. It's pretty good, though, you guys see it, I'm sorry. But Zamir, also honorable mention, All-Middlesex Defense, so that's Zamir Dawood. Tamir Jenkins, Tamir Jenkins is our starting inside linebacker. He's got back-to-back seasons with over 100 tackles. He was also voted, I believe, second-team All-Middlesex Defense. Tamir really inhibits everything that we want in a player and in a leader on our defense. And we're, again, another junior, I got, we're going to have again for another year. He's an exciting player to watch, and he's only going to get better, and he really exemplifies everything that we want as a defensive leader, that's Tamir Jenkins. Jared Tynes, Jared Tynes, to me, arguably should have been, could have been, and, well, if it was my vote, be the Defensive Player of the Year in the GMC. He finished the season with 10 sacks, 22 tackles for loss. He's, as of right now, currently number eight all-time in the school in sacks, and he is without a doubt an exciting player to watch on the field. He just about single-handedly beat two teams for us this year, just with his efforts alone. He's a great leader to the young guys, he's an awesome weight room guy, and he's just someone that you're going to be reading about in a couple of years, and if he keeps it up and works hard, so that's Jared Tynes. We have our quarterback, Frankie Garbolino. Frankie is, as of right now, number one in every category in school history in passing, whether it's receiving yards, touchdown passes. He broke his own record for most yards in a season. And again, like Jared, and like Zamir, and like Tamir, these are four junior leaders that we're going to have next year, and they do everything the right way, whether it's in school or on the field. You know, you're talking about guys that all up here have either a 3.8 or above in the classroom, and I think that goes even beyond. And it's not easy to balance the school life and, you know, and playing, you know, practicing every day, and we're grueling with them, and you practice every day, and you perform like that on the field, but to do it in the classroom too, thank God, it ain't take after me. But these are my junior leaders. I have four of my seniors, again, no particular order, Mr. Brandon Harrison. Brandon Harrison, he had about 90 tackles on the year, made some of the most exciting plays I've, I've seen as a five-year head coach in the playoffs. Brandon's playoff performance was hands down some of the best I've ever seen, just making tackles down the line, getting two huge interceptions in two of the playoff games, one in particular, the one in the semifinals against Cherokee. We're going to miss Brandon a lot. I know he's going to have continuous success, whatever college picks him up, and I'll make sure that happens. And that's Brandon Harrison. Who am I forgetting? Where's Amari here? Amari Macklin? Amari comes into the season where, he told me a week before the season ended, he was like, going into my senior year, I didn't think about playing. And thank God, he did, because what a force with him and Tamir in the middle of our defense. I wouldn't know, I would be probably the worst defensive coach in the state without these two guys. But he finished the season, Amari finished the season with over 140 tackles, and top 10 in the state of New Jersey. For a kid that didn't want to play, he did pretty good, man. Always, always congratulating his teammates, always the first guy to high-five his teammate, awesome guy in the locker room, another guy that's got a 3.8, 4.0 kid, like this, and every college he's talked to in the last two weeks thinks that, very highly of him, articulate, says the right things, maybe talks a little too much, but Amari Macklin, we're going to miss him a lot. And he was also voted the Central Jersey Radio Defensive Player of the Year. It's Amari Macklin. Jaden Myers, Jaden Myers, receiver, four-year football player for me. Jaden is, again, I go back to the grades, Jaden is a 4.0 student. He's getting, he just had a conversation the other day with Penn and Yale University. He's a guy that we're really going to miss on the football field, doing it the right way, not only on the field but off. And he's leaving the school, number two all-time in receptions, number three all-time in receiving yards, and number six, tied for sixth for most interceptions in school history, and that's Jaden Myers. Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Marquise Perry. Marquise had a season which, I mean, if you were at the Obridge game, he scored five touchdowns and single-handedly, I thanked him for the win. And he finished the season with 21 touchdowns, and the numbers alone are remarkable. And I know the All-State stuff comes out on Friday, and if his name's not in there, I'm going to NJ.com, wherever they are, and I'm going to say something. But anyway, Marquise is finishing his career number one all-time in receptions, number one in receiving yards, and number fourth all-time scoring in North Brunswick history. And the collection of guys that are up here are really the face of North Brunswick football, and they really did things the right way, and they will continue to do that to be the role models in school. And I'm really proud of these guys, I'm going to miss the seniors and the juniors, you better be in the weight room tomorrow. So, that's it, and thank you so much to everyone.
Anybody like to say anything, please?
First off, I wanted to thank the Board of Ed for not only recognizing us, recognizing us tonight, but for your support throughout the whole season. I also want to thank Coach Sypot and the rest of the coaching staff for what they've done since they've come in in the past year, five years, and how they've just changed the whole culture around and started winning some games. Thank you, guys.
As we wrap up, I'd just like to thank all of you for an exciting season. It was great watching the games with, with you, and thank you for being scholar athletes too. It's very impressive to hear of your academic work, and that's, that's something we're very proud of as well.
And we'll call back up Coach Carroll in girls soccer.
The two other girls that were nominated for All-White Division and also for All-GMC were Kelly and Katie Degatano. Katie is not able to be here today, but I'll start with her. She's had, she's only a sophomore. She has had 14 goals and 25 assists and 53 points total. She currently holds the 13th spot in the top 20 of all-time girls soccer history. I foresee her at least moving into the top five by the time she is, she has graduated in two more years. I'm very lucky to have her for the next two years. She's tenacious, she's feisty, she's not very big, but she's physically strong and can play against any girl on the field. She has marked the biggest girls I've seen, and she completely shuts them out of the game. She's a playmaker, she creates all of the opportunities. You will see that when I start talking about her sister. She's, I love coaching her, I love her on my team, she's a leader, she is a captain, she was a captain this year as a sophomore, and I'm sure she's going to continue to lead our team for the next two years. And then there is Kelly. Come on up, Kel. Kelly is an all-around team player. She's dangerous, she's unstoppable. Her soccer ability is incredible. She's had a lot of amazing achievements in her four years here. She's a four-year player, a three-year captain. She has scored a total of 106 goals. She has had 36 assists totaling 248 career points. She's one of the top-leading scorers in the state. She is number one in top North Brunswick history. I don't foresee her being beat out of that spot, knock on wood, at all, if ever. She has been All-White Division 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, as well as All-GMC in 2019, 2020, and 2021. She has been All-State in 2020 and 2021. She received top Central Jersey All-State last year. She is the Player of the Year for NJ.com, the Player of the Year for MyCentralJersey. She's on the third team for NewJersey.com as well. She has a scholarship to play at Monmouth next year, and I'm sure she's going to continue doing really great things. And again, thank you for all of your support. I couldn't have done it without you. I'm really going to miss my seniors next year, I had a lot of them, but I'm sure we'll have a lot of continued years of success. Thank you.
Kelly, would you like to say something? So, I guess Carroll and Degatano, all those, all those travel soccer games that you guys were going to when I was at LP were worth it? Okay.
And that's it for our Fall Athletes, and we'll be back here for Winter and Spring with hopefully just as many, if not more, student athletes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morell. Athletes, parents, thank you again for coming this evening, we really appreciate it. And Mr. Morell and coaches, again, thank you for all your time and efforts in making this, this a realistic, a reality for our students, because just being able to participate in the sports is life-changing for so many students, and that's the thing for many kids that brings them into, into school every day. So, thank you all for your efforts as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes, the conference regular public meeting, November 17, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? The minutes have been accepted.
All right, Madam President, Communications. I actually did receive a letter this month from the New Jersey State School Nurses Association, which informed me that one of our school nurses, Mrs. Anna Toupe, is currently serving in a leadership role on the New Jersey School, New Jersey State School Nurses Association Executive Board in the position of parliamentarian. The New Jersey School, State School Nurses Association seeks to improve health and educational outcomes for children by building the capacity of school nurses to promote school and community wellness and to deliver high-quality healthcare in the school setting. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Toupe for devoting a considerable amount of time and energy in this leadership role and for representing North Brunswick Township Schools. So, good evening to all our viewers, and again, to our families and students here tonight. As I mentioned this morning on the township broadcast, we continue to see an increase in COVID-19 cases throughout the district, as has the rest of the state. Please check out our COVID-19 dashboard on our district website for the daily updates on numbers. On this page, you can see cases and quarantines for the whole district, and you can also look by school by school, and by students, and by staff members. Our nurses have been working diligently, contact tracing, and contacting those who may have been exposed to COVID-19. And as of now, although there are no, there are increased cases, we have no indication of school widespread, and we keep in very close communication with our Department of Health to continually reinforce and refocus our layered mitigation strategies and keep schools open. We want to keep our focus on keeping schools safely open in person for students, and we look closely at each individual case and quarantine only those who need to be quarantined, rather than closing down entire classes or grades, but certainly will do so if needed. We continue to encourage parents to talk to their pediatricians about having their children ages five and up vaccinated. We are continuing to partner with the New Jersey Department of Health, their testing partner Miramis, who has already been testing our non-vaccinated staff, and we will be able to offer free COVID-19 screening testing program to all staff and students regardless of vaccination status. A message with more details was, on how to sign up, was sent earlier this week to families and staff, so please look on our website if you're interested in looking. So please look on our website if you're interested in looking for more information. The remaining district winter concerts will be held in the high school auditorium on the following dates. Thursday, December 16 for John Allen's Elementary School. Friday, December 17, Livingston Park. Monday, December 20, Judd School. And Tuesday, December 21, Linwood School. We've already had four successful concerts. And it's very nice to have our in-person music performances back, just as our sports have been. Please don't forget that schools will close for a half a day on Thursday, December 23. And then all schools will be closed on Friday, December 24 through Friday, December 31, 2021, for winter recess. The board offices are also closed on December 24, 27, 30, and 31. Limited staff will be available at the board offices on the 28th and 29th. We wish all families a safe and enjoyable winter break and a Merry Christmas to those who celebrate and a Happy New Year to all.
Hi, everyone. You're having a good night. So on December 3, SGO and the Classic 2024 and 2025 sponsored the Mr. MBTHS competition. There was 10 boys competing, and our winner was Javion Rojas, aka Man. And then on December 9, our band, orchestra, and choir presented a wonderful show to get everyone excited for the holiday season. On the day before break, all of our students were excited to return for Christmas in the Commons.
And then just this past Saturday, Key Club has been working with the My Goal Autism Foundation for a holiday toy drive. And we volunteered at their annual holiday party on December 12. And I was there, and it was just so amazing to see some of the kids. You know, they're playing some of the games, they're struggling, and they make that last breakthrough. And there was one little girl, and just the happiness she had, she went, she gave a big hug to her mom. And like, she was just so happy, it just touched my heart. So I'm just really excited to be working with Key Club and that we're doing stuff like that and like making a difference in these kids' lives.
The Alchemist Theater Company has begun preparations for Theater View, which takes place in mid-January. So the January 13, 14, and 15 is what we have planned so far. I'm one of the co-directors, so you guys should definitely come out and see it.
And then lastly, when we return from break, we will hold our winter pep week. So students will participate in Pajama Day, Character Day, Decade Day, Class Color Day, and Blue and Gold Day. And we will end the week with the celebration of our winter athletes and class competitions, with the juniors are going to win, by the way. But that concludes all, Madam President.
Thank you. It's always good to get a little competition going.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to give a committee report for Student Services. I took notes on behalf of Mr. Brockman. And we had our meeting on Wednesday, December 8. We had a great presentation by Carrie-Anne Egan, the new aquatics director. First of all, I just want to give her a shout out because she is amazing. She's done so much with the program already in the first couple of months. And she really just gave a really great presentation to all of us on the aquatics program, what she's doing and what she looks forward to do in the future with the pool. We also spoke about nursing, how Ms. Shiroka had mentioned that Miramis was doing some testing on our non-vaccinated staff members. We had a vaccination clinic on that day, Wednesday, December 8, with over 450 participants. One of our nurses is retiring in March of next year. And we thank her for her service throughout her years in the district. We spoke about the mental health rebound, which was beginning screening in early January. We spoke a bit about our special education programs throughout our schools, some different events that were coming up within the preschool. And we also spoke about some district situations throughout the meeting. So that was really it. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I'd like to give a report for the business operations. I took notes on behalf of Mr. Legori. We actually met next, oh, sorry, last Wednesday, the 8th. Couple of things that we discussed. For Linwood, we discussed, for Linwood campus, we discussed that we're still waiting on the supplies to come in for the playground, for that to be built for the ECC. For the signage, we're still awaiting the pin letters for the ECC and the Board of Ed for the building. But if you might have noticed, in the parking lot, we do have the signs for the ECC and for the Board of Ed, as well as the directional signs in place. For the high school, there's ongoing remediation of the auxiliary gym floor. We do have the vapor guard in place there. We're still waiting on repair or, I should say, replacement of two of the roof sections. We're just waiting on insulation to come in so we can complete those. And then we have ongoing transformer, CHP, and gear maintenance. For the middle school, excuse me, we have the solar PPA and lease agreement that's been signed. And the plan is in development for the solar panels to be installed. There's some remediation that we're working on for the women's locker room, the bathrooms. That'll be ongoing. We're just waiting to figure out the plan for remediation. Some of the other facilities are still in progress. Still waiting on some of the radios, cameras, some of our vehicles, phones, et cetera. For the elementary school HVAC upgrade, we have the bid that opened on December 22. And we have submitted the project to the DOE. Some of our audit information, we have the ongoing CAFR, our Perkins. And then we have Department of Agriculture, the school nutrition program procurement review, and administrative review. For our emergent and capital maintenance grant, actually, this is referenced, two of the items we referenced in our agenda tonight, page 15, under Finance, Items 3, B and C. It mentions that we are going to be purchasing, well, two things. Purchasing two new boilers. One is we're actually amending a motion that we did previously in our November agenda to change the type or the brand, I should say, of one of the boilers. And also, we're going to purchase an additional boiler. And then lastly, we had discussed an available BPU grant. After extensive research, we looked into the requirements of the grant, some of the things that would be required, some of the things that we'd be able to use it for. And it was determined that it wouldn't apply to that at this time. And that concludes my report.
Madam President, could I add something to the Student Activities Report, please? Could I add something to the Student Activities Report? So just two things we forgot to mention. The first one was yesterday, or Tuesday. All the culture and language clubs held the annual Gingerbread House competition, which culminated with the holiday party, with the Italian club taking the final win. And the last thing, Mr. President, Mr. MBTHS, Javion Rojas, right here. He's too humble to say, I'll say it for him. He just got a full ride to Emory University. We're all really excited for him, and I know he's going to do great things in the future. So I'm excited to see what he has to do.
Congratulations. That's amazing.
Oh, that concludes Madam President.
Madam President, I would like to present the Curriculum Committee Report. So the Curriculum Committee met on December 1. And we actually had a guest speaker, Ms. Janine Laffier, who is the supervisor for Math and Science, grades 5 through 8. And she gave us an update on a program called Mechatronics, which really focuses, it comes under our STEM. And it really focuses on electricity. Some of the feedback that was shared from the students was the fact that they really enjoyed learning how electricity works. And they were just very excited about the fact that it was a hands-on course, and they got a chance to experience that. The other aspect of the STEM component is an ACES program. And ACES is an acronym for Aquatics, Climate, Ecosystems, Science. And very, very interesting program. Thoroughly enjoyed hearing about it and the fact that it's an interdisciplinary program. So it ties in engineering practice. It ties in some financial literacy, ties in climate change, social change, as well as equity and inclusion. So all of these things are various facets of this program that come into play to help take children's learning experience really to another level. Because it's that higher learning that our superintendent talks about, which I think is very, very important to really help children grow and develop and begin to think outside of the box. Because now they have this hands-on experience. And it seems like these light bulbs are going off in the classroom. And they get an opportunity to explore and experience things, and it's wonderful. We were given an update on a phonics program for grades K through 2. Yeah, K through 2. And I'm very excited about phonics awareness being introduced or reintroduced into our curriculum. Because I truly believe that phonics is at the foundation of reading and writing. So I'm very, very happy to hear about it. There will be an assessment, January 2022, for all grades. We got an update on math, grades K through 4. And, you know, it should not come as any surprise that math was one of those subjects that was very challenging throughout the pandemic. You know, I know it's difficult to learn math in person for some students, let alone trying to learn math in a virtual environment. So needless to say, we've had to beef up our support for some of the children in the district that have struggled with math. And we've done a good job with regards to benchmark assessments. So we've implemented things such as grade level readiness tests, topic assessment, and cumulative assessments, as well as formative assessments and small group instructions. All of the things necessary to gather data to assess where the children are with regards to their learning curve and what needs to be implemented so that we can strengthen their skills. We've also introduced a morning math focus, which is a program to help with intervention and support for some of the children that are struggling and need additional support outside of their math class to help close that learning gap and get them back on track. And lastly, there's a technology audit for printers and laptops. So what is it, three- to five-year plan? On sunsetting some of the older technology in the district. So that not only will the staff have the latest and greatest, but it's my understanding that the students will have some of the latest and greatest technology as well. And we've seen the benefits of that with 3D printers. The students seem to love the 3D printers. And I'm a bit jealous because, you know, there are some very exciting things going on. And I'm very happy to report out for the curriculum. And I'm just very excited about some of the learning opportunities that our students are having an opportunity to take advantage of. So that ends my Curriculum Committee Report.
Okay, briefly, I have a Personnel Committee Report. We met on December 8. And those actual items are reflected on pages 4 through 10 of the agenda. I want to acknowledge the resignations that are noted and thank those members for their service and wish them well in either their retirement or in their new positions. We have several leaves of absences that are noted. And there were some personnel adjustments that were made to reflect the coverage for those positions. We want to welcome our new staff, both certified and non-certified, as well as our subs that are coming on board. We're looking forward to having them. COVID screening continues for staff members that remain unvaccinated. And I know that effort is being led in large part by Ms. Strumbo. From what I hear, it is not an easy process, but it has been almost a seamless process thanks to her guidance and her oversight. So I really do not want to take that lightly. I know it's a big lift for not just our district, but for districts across the state. And we are doing very well here. So I'm always glad to hear that report. Superintendent Shiroka did note that COVID cases are increasing across the state. I'm not sure if we all saw the NJ.com article that were all in orange, which, you know, causes alarm to everyone. So just a note that we are going to do our best to remain masked up and keep each other safe as best as possible. But again, thank Ms. Strumbo and her team for those efforts. It really does not go unnoticed. And as we are approaching the winter break, I just want to say happy holidays to everyone. I'm wishing you all a very restful break. Our board members as well, our staff administration, our students, and of course, our community. And I am looking forward to a prosperous start to 2022. Thank you.
None at this time, Madam President.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Administrative, Student, and Committee Reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? The reports? All right, now we will review the agenda. We have a consent agenda, and the board members have all seen all the parts of this agenda. And as we mentioned every month, they have also seen all their committee reports. And so we just do a quick review, page by page, prior to voting on it. So we need to do a public session for agenda items only. So do we have any comments just for the items on the agenda? Need a motion?
Motion to close the public portion of the meeting? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This portion is closed.
Take care, guys.
So we need to vote?
Take care. Happy holidays.
All right, we're on 13.
Yes.
Barry, you want to take that?
I'd like to make a motion to... I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items 1 through 3, policy, and transportation.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was second? It was a race. Ms. Toad? Thank you, I think. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Keeps?
Yes.
Ms. Keeps?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Toad?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez? All the motions have passed.
And Ms. Gonzalez. All the motions have passed.
I'm gonna go just pick it up.
Representing the North Brunswick Township Education Association, I want to come tonight to just bid farewell to two of our board members. Mr. Brooks and also Ms. Gonzalez, we wish you best of luck in the future. I especially want to reach out to Ms. Gonzalez tonight, you know, just to congratulate you on just a well-done job as, as board president over the years. With the association, we don't always see eye to eye and that's okay. We're sort of like this dysfunctional family, right? Where we all have the same goals, you know, for the students of North Brunswick and their staff of North Brunswick, making sure everything is the best that it can be. We don't always see eye to eye, but I, it's never adversarial. And, and I think that that is the important relationship that you have helped build over the years. And we've always been able to settle our differences and, and work together. There's sometimes, once again, where it's not always easy, but we find this compromising road for the best of everybody. And you know, you spoke about, you know, just what a privilege it was to be board president. And I just wanted to say on behalf of the association, the privilege was ours. So thank you very much for your leadership. Happy, and good luck to Mr. Brooks. And I, I don't want to minimize your, your role either.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
So happy holidays to, to everybody. Be safe as you know, it's all been stated, the COVID numbers are going up. Our staff is going to continue to do the best that we can to do our part to keep those numbers down and give the best education to the students of North Brunswick as we always strive to do. Happy holidays, happy new year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Have a wonderful guest here today.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see so many familiar faces and some new faces. I'm Clarabel Cortez, for those who don't know me. I'm a former school board member. It's one of the titles I hold closest to my heart, but I wanted to come in and say thank you, Mr. Brooks, Tony. Ms. Gloria Gonzalez, thank you so much. It was such an honor to work with both of you. And I saw, you know, firsthand how hard you worked for the students of North Brunswick. And Gloria, for you, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have joined the school board because representation matters. And seeing one Latina sitting there, I threw my hat in the ring. So thank you. I owe you. Congratulations to everyone.
And we'd like to congratulate you as well. I'm becoming county surrogate and you'll be sworn in January 1st, I believe. So congratulations. January 6th. Need a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
At this time, we're going to go into closed session and I'd like to read the motion. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter should be discussed as follows. Personnel matters and legal advice related to charter schools. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Show moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ladies.
Be quick, Ivan. Be quick, guidance. Come back.
Guys, we're back on.
Me.
We are back on the air.
Thank you.
(laughing)
My daughter's my daddy, huh?
Yeah.
Is that eating any?
Is that eating any?
A little extra sustenance here from one of our board members, thank you.
You're welcome.
So as we wrap up, right, we have to go back into open session.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to go into open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session.
Okay, I move to suspend employee number 4829, retroactive to December 2nd, 2021, pending further action by the board.
Second.
Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
The motion has passed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve two sidebar agreements between the North Brunswick Township Board of Education and the North Brunswick Township Education Association for the 2019-22 contract agreement.
Second.
Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
This motion has also passed.
All right, I think Madam President, you are ready for your final adjournment.
Hmm.
Would you like to make that motion?
(laughing)
Okay, I got it. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are closed for December.[1743.34][1743.34](applause)